Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We should note we had Brian Weave assisting on the flag there. Item two, roll call.
Nelson.
Here.
Larson.
Yeah.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Moriarty.
Here.
Excuse me. Item three is consent agenda. A is the motion to approve the city council minutes of April 6, 2020. B licenses, approved class E liquor license with class B wine, class C beer, and Sunday sales for Walgreens store number 1153, subject to final approval by the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division. C is a motion to approve sewer refund of 249 to Tara Rodriguez of 517 West Fourth Street, Spencer, Iowa. D is a motion to approve purchase of a six-foot John Deere mower for $21,250 after trade-in and an 11-foot John Deere mower for $35,710 after trade-in from C and B Operations LLC of Spencer, Iowa for the Park and Recreation Department. This is a CIP item. And E is a motion to set a hearing date for May 4, 2020 at 6:30 PM for budget amendment number two for fiscal year 2019-2020 budget.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
First by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by Ron. Questions, discussion on these items? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Teresa will call your name.
Nelson.
Hi.
Larson.
Hi.
Larson.
Hi.
Wunschel.
Where did I go?
He was on a minute ago.
He's back.
That's the great internet. I've been kicked off twice already.
What'd you do, Ron?
I don't know. Am I back on now?
Yeah.
Sorry, missed everything you said.
Uh, consent agenda. We have a first and second, and now we're to you on the vote.
Oh. Yay.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty.
Hi.
Thank you. Item four, new business. Four A is a motion to approve collective bargaining agreement between the city of Spencer and the Spencer Employees Association Incorporated for a period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. As a reminder, we authorize the staff a certain bandwidth, if you will, to negotiate that. Amanda has done a cover sheet. We had a personnel committee meeting prior to the council meeting, so I would entertain a first and a second on this.
I move, uh, council, as chairman of the personnel committee, we did approve this and recommend passage of it.
All right. Thank you, George.
I'll second.
Second by Lauren. We have a first and second. Discussion questions on this?
Amanda, one question. What percentage did that amount to overall budget?
Overall, it's 3%.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Item four B is a resolution amending the city of Spencer employee handbook.
So moved.
First by George, second by Tom. Questions, discussion on this?
The personnel committee reviewed this and we recommend passage.
Thank you, George.
So Amanda, being this is put to hand, but we will be just strictly doing wages now on our negotiating, correct?
Correct. Wages and term of the, of the agreement.
Term of length, right.
Any other comments? All right, Teresa will call the vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Larson.
Hi.
Larson.
Hi.
Wunschel.
Hi.
Hanson.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty.
Hi.
Thank you. Item four C is a resolution approving contact, contract, and performance bond for the 2020 intake replacement project with Corey Jurgens Construction LLC for $47,634.
I'm not sure if you agree with us.
Okay, first by Bill.
Second.
Second by Lauren. Questions or discussion on this? Hearing none, we will call the vote.
Nelson.
Hi.
Larson.
Hi.
Larson.
Hi.
Wunschel.
Hi.
Hanson.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty.
Hi.
Thank you. Four D is a resolution awarding contract for the 2020 Sealco project. Quotes were received on April 17 at 3 o'clock.
Can we have, uh, Ross go over those, what the quotes were?
Sure, Ross.
Yeah, so, so Friday we received three quotes. Two from guys that have done a lot of seal coating here in Spencer in the past, and then one, one new contractor. Uh, the new contractor was Midwest Coatings. They were the low bidder. And they were at 104.5% of the estimate. Uh, I, I did talk with them and one of the other contractors today. And, um, the, the spike in the price you're seeing is evidently from the aggregate costs. Um, and, and they thought maybe some of that was from the flooding last year, um, over on the Missouri River, um, which may be driving a little bit of that. Um, being as we hadn't worked with Midwest Coatings before I did call, um, the references they provided, um, and everybody I talked to had good things to say about them. So, uh, we would recommend awarding the contract Midwest Coatings out of Modale, Iowa.
Price can't go up because of oil.
No, no. That's why I thought maybe the cost would be down a little bit.
Yeah.
That wasn't the case.
So we still need a first and second, then we can open it back up for questions.
I'll make a first on that, Mayor. Oh, second.
By Ron. Second by, was that Lauren? Tom?
I think it was Tracy.
Tracy.
Tracy, okay. So we have a first by Ron, second by Tracy. Any other questions, discussions related to the project?
Hey Ross, have we used these folks before?
Sorry, what was that?
Have we used this firm before?
Uh, no, th- this is a new firm. Um, that's why we called and checked on references today. Um, it's like I said, everybody we talked to had good things to say about, uh, the contractor themselves, the staff, and the quality of work. Um, so, so I feel pretty comfortable after talking to several engineers and, uh, one of the city clerk today that, um, we should get a quality product.
Great. Thank you.
Hey, Ra- Ross, where did the other two bids come in? What percent, if this guy's 104, what were the others?
I would, I would say this is the, this is probably the closest, uh, quotes to middle I've ever had. Um, we, we had three quotes, and they were all within $260 of each other. Um, and for, so for a unit price, um, that's the only bid item there was, just, just taking a unit price item per square yard. Uh, the low bid was $2.07 per square yard. The other two quotes were $2.08. So they were all within a penny of each other, um, on their unit price. So I feel like we've, uh, we've definitely established the market, uh, for the product.
So it's, it's, it's not a, it's probably not a fact that, or not a issue that they're all getting aggregate from the same place then. Wouldn't think.
Um, one of the guys I talked to, uh, said that they couldn't even, th- there's kind of two aggregate producers that they get prices from. One of them's out of Minnesota. Um, the other one would be out of Sioux Falls. And one of the guys I talked to today said they couldn't even get a price from the guys out of Minnesota. So I'm not sure what the deal with that was. Um, typically, typically the guys from Minnesota would be a little bit higher on their aggregate price too, so.
I would guess it's from the lockdown.
Possibly. Although I know, I know Minnesota, that I, what I was told is the aggregate suppliers were essential employees, so essential workers, so.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we will call the vote.
Nelson.
Hi.
Larson.
Hi.
Larson.
Hi.
Wunschel.
Hi.
Hanson.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty.
Hi.
Thank you. Item four E is a motion to approve change order number one for project number five of 2019 Spencer Substandard Housing Rehabilitation Program.
I'll move that program, Mr. Mayor.
First by George.
Who's on it?
Second by Bill. Any questions? Uh, maybe Steve, do you want to touch on this quick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it's just straightforward, it's a change order, uh, in the amount of, uh, $3,600. Uh, basically it's for a new air conditioning unit that was installed on this particular house. Um, and this was identified as an alternate in the original bid, and the owners decided to, uh, opt for it at this time. Uh, all of the costs of the change order is above and beyond the 24,999 cap. So the homeowner is going to end up paying for, uh, all of these dollars, uh, out of pocket essentially.
Thank you.
Steve, is that added to the homeowner's mortgage then, or they, they have to, they've done the five home, uh, home equity loan or something?
Uh, that's a good question. Uh, the way the program was structured, uh, each homeowner is responsible for 10% of the improvements up to the cap of the 24,999, which he reaches the cap, so he's got $2,500 there. Any cost above and beyond the 24,999, the homeowner pays 100%. Uh, so that will be added on. And then the homeowner is given the option of either paying at the, uh, completion of the project, uh, upfront, or the city is giving them the option of having those local match dollars assessed against their properties, um, in a, in a typical, uh, city assessment. So, uh, this particular homeowner is going with the assessment option.
Okay. So with that $3,600, we paid over 10 years.
Correct. Now, Bill, they could take out a loan if they wanted to, or could get a better deal from a bank or somewhere else too, so that's not prohibited.
Right.
Steve, how many other projects do we have going on at this time, and do we have any more available to, for, for this round?
Yeah, that's another good question. Um, the next agenda item, actually not skipping ahead, but we're closing out two tonight. So that will be three projects completed. Uh, this week I just received the final closeout paperwork on the fourth house from round one. And my understanding is the fifth house will be wrapping up within the next couple of weeks. Uh, with that said, I've been in communication with Kristen at Northwest Iowa Planning, and she has four additional applicants that, uh, we are going to be initiating the round number two going forward with the bid specifications and the, uh, contractor, uh, open houses here, within the next, uh, month, I would say.
Thanks, Steve.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Item four F is a resolution accepting work for the 2019 Substandard Housing Program, project number four and project number five.
So moved.
By Tom.
Sorry.
Second by Donovan. Questions on this?
Steve, have we, I mean, these are the first ones. Have we thought about doing an exit interview with the homeowners to see how this process worked? If there's any other ways of possibly making it better, or if it's just working really well right now?
Uh, I, I would certainly be glad to reach out and, and visit with each of the homeowners, uh, in regards to that. Um, I, these, these most recent two I have not spoken with. I've spoken with each of the five, uh, property owners throughout the process, uh, throughout the program. And, uh, my understanding is, is everything is going okay right now. Several of these projects were put on hold over the winter, uh, due to the weather. Uh, but now that things are warming up, uh, all of the outdoor activities are, are being completed. But I'd be glad to reach out to them, um, at the conclusion of the project and, and see if they have any words of advice moving forward.
Thank you, Steve.
I think it'd be a good idea for simple reason, if we give them a questionnaire, Mayor, we can find out ways of improving the process. I think Ron's got a good point.
I agree. I think that is a good, a good idea.
We will do that.
All right. Any other discussion? We will call the vote.
Nelson.
Hi.
Larson.
Hi.
Larson.
Hi.
Wunschel.
Hi.
Hanson.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty.
Hi.
All right. Four G is an ordinance amending provisions of Title VII, Chapter 14 of the Spencer City Code concerning all terrain vehicles, otherwise known as ATVs. This is the first filing.
So moved.
First by Tom.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Some discussion questions on this? Orby, maybe you want to lead into this?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, so at the council, can remember, uh, five years ago, you passed an ordinance that allows the, uh, residents here in Spencer to purchase a permit from the city, and it allows that resident to, uh, drive their ATV, uh, from their point, their place of storage or their residence, uh, to the nearest, uh, point of the city limits. Um, so it's just basically on a very tight, um, roadway or allocation there from their residence, uh, outside the city limits. The new ordinance as proposed here would allow residents to, um, basically drive on all city streets, uh, without the purchase of a permit from the city, but it does require them to buy the state permit. Um, laws on all, uh, city streets in Spencer except for Highway 71 and 18. Um, and it allows the ATVs to be driven, uh, 24 hours a day.
Chief, I had one question. Um, on the noise, noise on them, they have to, would have to have a muffler system, original installation or something if we have a noise issue with them?
Correct. The original muffler is required by our city ordinance.
I'd like to command the staff to move it forward. Uh, I know that the chief was at one of the roundtables that I was at during the planning session we had at the event center, and he brought it up. And it's, I think it's great to see the staff get together and move this thing forward. I think it's, it's good for the city.
All right. Any other questions or discussion related to this? All right, we will call the vote.
Nelson.
Hi.
Larson. Larson.
Hello.
Larson.
Hi.
Wunschel.
Hi.
Hanson.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty.
I think George said, uh, aye, George? He's muted.
I must catch, aye. Must've been shot.
All right. Thank you. Item four H is the ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 10, Section 6 of the Spencer City Code concerning the operation of golf carts on Spencer city streets. Uh, this is the first filing.
I didn't make that motion.
First by Bill, second by Donovan. Discussion questions on this? Uh, again, chief, maybe some clarification with the golf carts?
Yes, the, currently the city ordinance allows residents, um, that live close to the golf courses, allows them to drive their, uh, golf carts out on the roadway to basically make it to the, to the golf course. Uh, the new ordinance as proposed, uh, would allow them to drive on all city streets, um, except for Highway 71 and 18, but does require them to have a slow-moving vehicle sign and a, uh, safety flag. Uh, the golf carts would only be operational from sunrise to sunset.
Is the limitation of crossing the bridge at Grand Avenue, there is, isn't there?
Yeah, currently there is no exception for the Grand Avenue Bridge. Um, it's one of those things with the, with the state. Uh, we, there's no allowance, um, or exemption to get across the bridge.
And no way for residents to get from the north side of the river to the south side of the river?
Correct.
Bypass.
Bypass. Does the county allow golf carts?
Orby? That, that I, I'm not aware of. I know they allow the ATVs, and so that is a possibility for residents to drive ATVs around on the bypass, but I am not sure on the golf carts out in the county.
It might be a problem because of speed limits, or, you know, the, the slow-moving vehicle.
See, Chief, I had a couple people question. Uh, again, going back to the original, uh, ordinance with their households being fairly close to the golf course. And as you get towards fall, you use your lighting more frequently on your carts. Their question was, like, if they're a block off, or I'm going to say within two blocks, do they still have to have the moving, slow-moving vehicle sign and flag?
The only exception for the, uh, slow-moving vehicle sign is if you're making a direct crossing or 90-degree crossing of a, uh, city roadway. Uh, if you're making that direct crossing, then you do not need that slow-moving vehicle sign.
Okay, if you're going onto the street like a half a block, you need to have it. Good.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions or comments, Tom?
Yeah, on both of these, uh, subjects with the golf carts and the ATVs, um, I've had a lot of, uh, people contact me about them. Um, obviously there's a tremendous amount of, uh, uh, excitement about it with a lot of people. Um, couple things that have come across, um, the most to me are, uh, and I think it's something we're probably going to have to keep an eye on, is, uh, and, and Mark did a good job of explaining it there, but, um, making sure people don't feel they can use the west side of the bridge trail to get across, um, as it is considered part of the highway. And the other one is, um, people with golf carts that already have lights on them, um, were wanting to adjust that to being able to use them at night. So I just told him, I said, "Not at this time. It's something we could possibly look at down the road," but unless you have other feelings about it, Mark, but I assume you don't right now.
Uh, not right now, I don't, I guess. You have the slow-moving vehicle sign. They, they are a little bit different than the ATVs because they're, the ATVs aren't going to have a problem, I don't believe, uh, making the speed limits at all, or staying up with the flow of traffic, where obviously the, the golf carts are, uh, definitely slower, uh, than that. So I, I think right now, I think, yeah, as the council has done in, in previously, they've taken steps, uh, maybe steps to work towards this right now, and if, if the council so chooses, maybe in the future, if there's no issues, we can always add that later down the road.
I agree. Thanks.
All right. Anybody else have anything? With that, we will call the vote.
Nelson.
Hi.
Larson.
Hi.
Larson.
Hi.
Wunschel.
Hi.
Hanson.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty.
Hi.
All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, last item under four is a motion to approve real estate contract with David and Pam Rouch, the sellers for 106 West Park Street, Spencer, Iowa, for $65,000.
I'll make your motion.
Second by Bill. Second by Lauren. Discussion questions on this?
What is our plan to do with the house once we, I, I think they're in there till the end of May, right?
Mm-hmm. Uh, we intend to put an RFP out for, uh, someone to either move it or tear it down.
I thought it was determined that they could not move it probably because of all the additions that had been put on it.
Perhaps, uh, but if somebody wants to get creative, they might be able to do that.
Hey, anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Item five, engineers report. Ross?
Uh, I do have a brief update. Uh, we got a few projects that are starting again. Um, first one is the 2019 Manhole Rehab Project, uh, Dependable Brain, or Dependable Drain. Um, came back in to Spencer today, um, and they're starting to, uh, work on the rest of those manholes that they didn't get rehabbed last fall. Um, as you'll remember, they're working on rehabbing the manholes, uh, north of the treatment plant, um, that go through the field, uh, up towards the soccer fields, and then, uh, north up to East 18th Street. Um, we've also heard from Holstein Excavating, um, for the West Fourth Street Sewer Replacement Project. Um, they've got a lot of cleanup work to do out there. Um, as you remember, they, they quit working in the middle of January on that project. So they have, uh, they have a lot of finished grading to do. They have, uh, temporary pavements to, uh, remove and replace. And they also have, obviously, a lot of seating, um, and erosion control work, uh, to get that project finished up, and some other odds and ends. Um, on the 2019 PCC paving project, um, we, we, um, had a supplemental contract to finish the seating on West Sixth Street for that project, um, because we closed that job out, um, back in February, I believe. And so Vanhalla Lawn Service was here today to look at the site, and they're planning on getting that seated within the next week, so. Those are a few of the things that are going on and coming up, um, in the near future.
Thank you, Ross. Any questions for us?
Ross, I'm sorry, on that West Fourth, what did you say the finish date would be to, for them to have that cleaned up?
Um, I believe, uh, we had a change order last fall, and I believe we extended that completion date to, uh, the middle of May. So hopefully within the next month, I would hope everything would look pretty good.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ross? Thank you. Item six, city managers report. Amanda?
All right. Uh, well, uh, just a brief update on operations. Uh, we continue to meet every day at 4:30 with our, um, COVID-19 task force. Um, so far we've got, uh, no new information as it relates to closures or social, social distancing, um, requirements. We continue to follow the governor's, uh, recommendations, and, um, will do so until we're told differently. Um, I sent an email out to all of you today, just highlighting a couple of things. Um, first is the wage study, so that continues to move forward. I had a call with our consultant on Um, first is the wage study, so that continues to move forward. I had a call with our consultant on Friday, and he has produced a preliminary um executive memo, a preliminary recommendation on HR functions for the organization, and preliminary uh recommendations for the uh wage system. So what we'd like to do, I'll send those recommendations out to you. Um, I'll do it tomorrow. He was gonna touch up a couple of things um today and get it back to me. And then we'd like to schedule one-on-one uh calls with each of you after you've had a couple of days to review it. That way, you can um talk directly with him about any questions you might have, additional information you might need um before he comes back on site, whenever, whenever that is, um, to give his formal recommendations on, on compensation and um related matters. So be looking um for that. Uh, I also, in that email, I'd like for us to attempt to finish up our strategic planning efforts on Tuesday, May fifth at five thirty. If we're still um practicing safe social distancing, we'll do it online. Um, and if not, we'll plan to um, to do it in person. But I think it's important that we uh start to map out where we're gonna go, because eventually COVID nineteen will not um take up the majority of our days. And um we've got some uh big and exciting things to be working on going forward. Um, so with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Amanda, maybe some questions that might be for Jared a little bit. The youth baseball and softball. Um, have we been in conversations with that at all, Jared, or, or what are we looking at?
Yeah, we've talked to him a little bit um about that. They're still kind of following the governor's recommendations to not hold any organized sports or anything until after April thirtieth. I know the governor closed some of the spring sports and stuff down. Um, so they're still working on their plans to kind of have some sort of a season. We'll just kind of see what the next few weeks pan out, um, and still continue that conversation before they make a final decision whether to cancel or continue or reschedule games and, and that sort of thing.
And we had the youth um program with the YMCA, the, or, or with the playground program.
Yeah, we're gonna have a conversation with the Y staff um here on Wednesday about those and, and try to set some certain dates on when we're gonna make some decisions on those uh moving forward.
All right, Jared, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Amanda? Thank you. Item uh seven, mayor's report, just a couple items here. Uh, just like to remind the public of what the governor has recommended and uh would encourage everyone to follow her recommendations. She talked a little bit today, uh, the peak. Uh, this might have been on a daily call, but the peak has been moved out a little bit to the first part of May, so just be prepared. We'll continue to see increasing cases, you know, for a week or two at least. Um, her order is to stay at home while she's not done a shelter in place. Her recommendation is stay at home unless you need to go to the store, or you need to exercise, and she wants one person per family to go out to the stores. I've heard from uh several citizens who are concerned about there's, you know, families that are out shopping, there's multiple, you know, people that are out shopping. And, and so just please be uh respectful of the retailers, as well as follow what the governor's recommendations and her orders are for that. Uh, just reminder to maintain social distance when you're out, stay six feet away from each other. Like to thank all the retailers in the area, those who are open to the public, as well as those who are not, who continue to find a way to service their clients. Uh, this is a, a hard time, uh, we understand it. And we've fielded some questions about will we be doing a local economic development relief fund for businesses? The answer to that is, at this time, we have no program set up. We really want to let this thing run its course, see what the totality of the federal programs are, see what the totality of the state programs are, and then have a discussion as a council. Um, if there's something we want to do locally. So a- as of this time, there is no fund to apply for. Uh, ATV, I would echo Bill's comments. Uh, I would like to thank the staff, as well as the previous council uh who had the exhaustive discussion, I believe it was five years ago, maybe six, about um how to handle ATV vehicles. And they phased it in, I think appropriately with a first step, and uh have uh, credit to those people who have ridden them, there has not been a lot of altercations. And so that has voted well for the expansion of ATV and golf cart usage on the city streets. Uh, the regional rankings that the government uses, we have some questions on that. Northeast Iowa is at a ten, ten is their threshold. So the governor did change regionally. If you're outside of your house, the only groups that can gather are family members. I've had a question, it, does that apply here? That does not apply here. Their order right now is still ten people, and they can be of any ten people um gathering in a group in our area. But just be prepared that if we do escalate up to uh, a number like ten, like northeast Iowa, then you might see some additional orders from the governor here. I'd like to thank the staff and elected officials for their adaptation to these uh meetings, the technology format. Uh, necessity tends to lead to good things, and I think a good thing is accelerated timeline where we've wanted to post meetings for people to have better access. One of our goals has been better communication. We've had a lot of good feedback with it being on social media as well as YouTube. Are we streaming live tonight? Okay, so SMU is here filming as well as uh we're streaming live. And so just anything that we can do to get the word out to the public, we, we take that very seriously, and thank everybody involved in that process. Like to uh send a shout out to Jared in the Parks Department. When I was on my way to work the other day, I saw the trail being swept down by the river. And then uh yesterday or today, we got an email from a citizen that had mentioned in many, many years of walking trails, this is the uh best maintenance that they've seen on the trails. So thank you guys for all that you do. We have a heavy investment into the trails and appreciate everyone keeping them clean. Last word that I would give to the citizens is, um, what we do, the things that we close, the decisions that we make. Number one, they're in consultation with healthcare professionals, and we do them to keep you safe. We don't do them to infringe upon your freedoms and infringe upon your rights. That's not the intent here. In fact, we have exhaustive discussions whenever we make a decision to make sure that we're not extending too far. We're extending in an appropriate manner, and uh we're behind the decisions that we've made, and we'll continue to make them. But at this time, uh, we carry on as we have been. So with that, I would entertain any question? All right. Item eight, council and committee reports?
Our next council meeting will be Monday, May fourth at six thirty PM, maybe on Zoom, maybe in person, we don't know yet.
Thank you, Amanda. Item nine, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims.
I'm with.
Second by Bill, discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? The motion carries. Item ten, any other opportunity to address the council? Going once? Going twice? Go on. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
You move.
First by Lauren.
Second.
Second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned.